So this submission is from the Huron District Council, written by Monique and supported by Mayor Mari and Vince. So when you're ready.
Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for providing us time on behalf of the Huron District to speak to our submission for Environment Canterbury's Long Term Plan. I am with great pleasure that I introduce Deputy Mayor Vince Daly to you and Monique, who is our senior planner at Huron District Council. Just in starting, I would like to acknowledge the significant progress that particularly in water quality that ECAN has made. However, we do have concerns as a district council in regard to the rate increases, which we consider unaffordable to many in the district that we do represent. I do take it that you've all taken time to read our submission and are fully aware of the issues that I will speak to today. Our priority focus is in regard to the proposed work programme, the resourcing of that to achieve the work that is proposed, and make a suggestion to Environment Canterbury that this should be delivered potentially over the life of the plan. We note that a large portion of the proposed work is suggested in year one of the 10-year plan. I'd just like to take an opportunity for you to consider the impact on our rural rate payers, who we consider paying a disproportionate amount in this proposal. All Huron District rate payers, both urban and rural, will experience an increase. And one example I would like to cite is a $4,251 increase in option one as proposed. This particular property currently looks after their own land. They pay a substantial charge to the irrigation company, of which a large portion of that goes to improve catchment environment outcomes. We do urge Environment Canterbury to encourage landowners in this space, rather than penalising them with increased regulatory costs. Our second point is in regard to the impact on residential properties in the Huron District. We do note that random samples show a 34% to 40% increase, as opposed to properties within the Christchurch area, where the proposed increase is around 18%. I guess that in regard to my first comment, the disproportionate way that the rate proposals are structured. And we urge you to consider also the move with urgency campaign and propose that this demonstrates a lack of awareness and understanding to deliver the work to the communities that we are responsible for and to. And just, oh, maybe I'll come back to that question at the end. I'd just also like to come back to the understanding that, as I said before, we do generally support the work programme, but do really question the value in front-loading the options that are provided in year one of the plan, and ask you to consider the option of smoothing the proposed work programme over the life of the plan. We understand, and as I'm sure you will as well, that staffing and resourcing of that proposed work programme alone will not enable or will be difficult to enable achievements in this area. And there again, I'm very aware that the current legislation is demanding, and we do urge Environment Canterbury to work in a more collaborative way of using a more bottom-up principles to ensure communities are encouraged, not discouraged, with this legislation, which potentially is what is designed in your proposed programme. Within the Huron District, we are fully aware of the burden of legislation. We know we have come in the MP East on biodiversity, natural climate change, adaption plans and emission budgets, and we do consider that we probably need to take a more cautious approach to this legislation. Whilst we know it is on its way, we are all uncertain of the responsibilities and requirements in relation to that. And we are concerned, or there is a general concern, that if we front-foot too much the legislation and the uncertainty of those responsibilities, that we may, in effect, be asking rate payers to pay twice, because we are uncertain of what the legislation may be and what the impact for our rate payers may be as well. We do consider that there are other tools in the toolbox that may be used to support communities, particularly rural communities, that have potential affordability issues for targeted groups, and wonder whether a consideration around rate rebates have been considered in this proposal to support the rural communities with providing some incentive to those communities or the targeted groups. So they are the issues that we have highlighted mostly in our written submission. And I guess that just before we go into potential question time, I'm mindful of the time, but we just wanted to understand, and perhaps you might be able to help us understand, that we would like to question, are you able to describe to us what a residential rate payer in a rural township, and we'll use an example in our written submission, Harden Settlement, it's a settlement of about 200 people, what will they receive for their 44.5% potential rate increase? I'm just going to ask, Vince, is there anything else you would like to add to that in this presentation? Come on, Vince.
No, just leading on to, there's still legislation to be worked through, and I think you sometimes might be putting the cart before the horse. And I know as an example of myself, you know, I've done a farm plan and everything, but now I'll have to redo my farm plan because of change in legislation. And so, you know, it's just, we need a bit of certainty on things, and, you know, I think the community just gets wound up. If things like that start happening, people start losing their drive.
Thank you, Mari. And thank you, Vince. Monique, Monique? Yeah, that's great. And thank you for your question about that household, but we'll take it as rhetorical. That opens a big door for councillors around this table, and we're only going to allow them to ask you questions or clarification. We will provide you that information, but not here today. So, side questions, please. Councillor Edge, councillor Water, councillor Farm, councillor Hands.
Thank you, Mari. Just a fairly simple question. You're generally supporting everything in the plan, so that's under option one. The issue for you, am I right, is really just the way and the affordability of that?
I guess in context, that is about the affordability and the pressure that will be imposed on our community. And I guess it comes back to my question, are there options that you can put in place to support our rural rate payers, like the rate rebate scheme for communities that are suffering? We need to be thinking at this time around the climate that is affecting our rural rate payers, that inability to afford something as proposed, even option one or two, in this current model, will be difficult and a challenge for our rural communities, who we are just going into another significant drought, and I actually think this all needs to be factored in.
Thank you, Mari, for your debitation. You seem to be saying that one thing you'd like us to do is to look at how we could smooth out the proposed work plans. So in terms of how we do that, would you support the possibility of borrowing, or would it be some clear reductions that you are referring to?
Well, what we're looking at is the targeted groups, and I think there's been a bit of discussion about affordability for certain parts of our community. And you look at your
Uniform annual
Uniform annual charge, it's only, I know as a Huron District, you're allowed up to 30%, we run always at about 29.9, so, and I think you're running at about a 7. And, you know, for people that could not afford that, they could always apply for the alongside the possibility of a regresional rate, which has actually already been increased. I just wanted to say, for example, in the whole areas of air quality or transport, if there are any particular areas there where you believe, in fact, we could be able to reduce or extend right out, if you've got any suggestions. In transport, we don't actually have any public transport in Huron, and air quality, I don't think that's a real big issue in the Huron either, in those two departments. But just, it's more on the environmental work trying to get, it's getting, I think you people will have problems getting enough staff, qualified staff with expertise in that short time. So spreading it out, meaning, you know, spreading out over the life of your plan, that'll be a matter of course, for the CEO, who should be well aware of it. Thank you for making that point. My final question is, with the examples you've given us on your first page, like, particularly say the rural examples, which has got quite a significant increase in their rates, do you have an idea of what kind of valuations those properties will be at? Yeah, I'm talking the rural ones particularly, you might like to tell us the other ones, but it's the rural ones. I just wondered if you could give us some examples.
I would just say off the top of my head, a residential home in Harden Township would probably be $250,000 to $300,000.
And the rural properties you've listed there, too, please?
Yeah.
We're not going to dig into this at all, actually.
Farmer chivvy, I'm looking at the right, right, it'd be about a three, two and a half to three million dollar property.
I was about to say that these are your figures, we'll trust your figures, that you've done the right figures. So, yeah, so thanks, Phil, but we'll move on. Councillor Farm?
Yeah, thanks so much. And thanks so much for your comments here around biodiversity, and clearly you're very proud of your own district's biodiversity, you've got some really amazing projects going on. That was really the topic of my question. Just asking for a bit more clarity, because in your submission, you request more encouragement, support, incentives for the great landowners already doing fantastic work. But then you talk about how if we're going to be using rates to help farmers by actually employing people to help them, that though that money would be best just left in the farmers' pockets? So are you saying there's a balance, or do you prefer one or the other? Is, yeah, well, interesting to see what's there.
Certainly as a district, what we have found the greatest favour and the greatest impact is working with our landowners to achieve the right outcome, rather than perverse outcomes, which can be, you know, unintended consequences. We have a strong history of working closely with our communities, and taking that bottom-up approach is certainly going to get the best results. I suppose in many ways, we would see the value in Environment Canterbury providing some science to back up those options. So we wonder whether that investment should be delivered from an ECAN perspective with good evaluated data, that we can support our communities, particularly our landowners, to achieve, you know, the big picture, to, if we're thinking biodiversity, to actually endorse their projects, is what we'd be considering would be the best outcome. Supporting something like, you know, the Kiwi2 Covenant, the Kiwi2 Trust, you know, where we provide a rates remission on that land, certainly incentivises, you know, best actions, best outcomes. So we absolutely believe in the ground up and working with our community, working with our farmers to achieve that success. Anything else?
Okay, got time for one more. Councillor Hands?
Thanks, Mari. Your submission refers to the central freshwater package and our land and water plan not being recognised by government, unfortunately. Is it the Huron District Council's position that we should be asking government for recognition of that, and that would change our expenditure in that sense?
Yeah, that's probably the likely position. Thank you.
Look, thank you, it's a long way to come for just a very short period of time, Mari, but thank you and Vince and Monique for coming and for your continued leadership, Mari, in the Huron District and your close relationship with us, it's really valued. So thank you. So our next submitter is David Hawke. And David is on behalf of the Horstall Residents Association. I understand you have a PowerPoint, David, is that right? Okay. And again, just the ruffra, it's not ruffra, it's a ruff, 10 minutes. If you get to nine, you can hear a wee bell from Louise, and then we'll do questions up to that last minute. Thank you.
So I'm guessing that the, I'll say next slide, and things will happen at that point? Is that the, right? Okay. So, Kia ora, call David Hawke up. My name's David Hawke, so I'm secretary of the Horstall Residents Association, and it's, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. Normally I'd have our chairman, John Bennett, sitting with me, but he's tripping around the North Island somewhere. It's, we've encouraged our members to put in individual submissions on the ECAN Long Term Plan, and I know some have done that, but I'm very much talking on an association perspective today, and we're focusing very much on the public transport part of the long-term plan. So the three points that we want to emphasise from our submission is, going to start off with a fairly technical angle first, and that's our request that you change your public time, sorry, public transport timetable adherence level of service target, which is level of service target 29, from what you could say counting buses to counting passengers. So that's the first point we want to emphasise. We're then going to swing a little bit to ask that you work with community partners and government agencies to mitigate the effects of transport corridors on the communities that they pass through. And then at the end, we're going to bring those two points together to argue that you've got, as a council, have got an enormous opportunity to transform transport in Canterbury, especially through public transport lanes on key routes. So, starting off with the level of service target, so just reading out the level of service target from your documentation, it states that at least 95% of trips depart their timetabled starting location time on time. So change that to at least 95% of passengers. So rather than trips, passengers depart their timetabled starting location on time and arrive at their timetabled destination on time. So broadly speaking, buses are timed roughly evenly through the day, but probably for anyone who lives in Christchurch, stating the obvious bus patronage varies widely through the day. So if you want to run a customer-focused service, which is what your long-term plan talks about, we think it's misleading to base your level of service target on when a bus leaves, rather than when the bus passengers board and arrive. So in our proposal, we're basically saying that you should weight your level of service target by the number of people boarding the bus, rather than the bus on its own. So we're obviously most familiar with Horstall, so that would mean that departure and arrival of peak-time services is weighted in this change level of service target at the expense of non-peak-time services. We fully realise that making that change to that level of service target has enormous implications, and that it can't happen overnight, but if you adopt this mindset, and it is a mindset change, we think it would transform your approach to public transport from buses to people. So following on a little bit from that and going sideways, so if you've got, we're on to the next slide now, is mitigating the effect of transport corridors on affected communities. So for whatever reason and however this has happened, we have, our district has a strong emphasis on private vehicles and road transport, but the consequences, such as noise, air pollution, diminution of active transport, safety and so on, they tend to be visited on local communities. And we were a bit surprised, I guess, at the absence of any reference in your draft long-term plan document on the effect of these transport systems on the communities through which they pass. We're obviously talking about Horstall, we understand we've been working a bit with the Addington community, it's also affected by this particular question, but they're going to be calling by and talking to you next week. They are faced with the prospect of the transport agency six-laning a section of Braam Street through their community. So these effects are actually quite large. And Horstall, we have similar issues, but at a smaller scale. The picture on the screen that you've got in front of you shows Horstall Junction Road, so many of you will be familiar with that, but it's a very similar sort of story on Horstall Road, Nichols Road, Sparks Road, Dunbar Road, Aidenfield Drive, Wegrum Road, Wincocks Road, and on and on and on. And so we think that you should, or what I've got in my notes, is we request that you earnestly work on this issue, so this question of mitigating effects through corridors. And so now the opportunity. So we think that, or we see, it's our sort of drowning in a sea of single occupancy cars, some are ours, and some of them are from Selwyn District, and we think that there's a better way. There's obviously no silver bullet, but part of the solution must be in express bus services that are frequent, on time, reliable and tight journey times. We have seen an inkling of this, not in our immediate area, but with the Rangiora project, and the number seven but Horstall bus route is at last seeing the start of some bus priority lanes along Horstall Road and Lincoln Road. There's lots of potential for more public transport lanes and express buses, but we think we could go even bolder than that. We're talking much more of a sort of regional level here, which is obviously your remit. So the Addington folk are going to talk to you about dedicating an existing lane on the Southern Motorway, all the way from Rollaston, to just express public transport and heavy goods vehicles. And given the amount of traffic from Rollaston, this would have enormous benefits for us, because a lot of them come through Horstall, and obviously the people in Addington. So one of the things that the plan mentions quite a lot is the leadership role that you have as a council, and we think here's your chance. And one of the things that we also reiterate in our plan is that we're keen to contribute. So thank you very much for listening.
But thank you for that. And sorry about the interruption, I just thought we could get our tech a bit better, but that's what we've got. So quick, councillors, questions from councillors? Councillor Water?
Thank you very much, David, for your very thoughtful ideas, and especially around the levels of service. Well, all of it. So I just had a couple of questions, though, like, with your, on page three, with your request that we, and linking future land use with, for example, urban development and the planning, and just how you see our role at ECAN to be involved with that. So you're really saying, like, one was the airspace, which was the greatest Christchurch partnership document, but are you also referring perhaps to some of the district plans that territorial authorities also are developing?
Yeah, I guess what we're seeing is that there's a disconnect between what ECAN is saying it wants to achieve and what local authorities are actually playing out in their district plans. And we had a really good example of that at the first of the airspace hearings, where we talked a bit about implementing the eight to 80 cities initiative, and the response that the panel had, which if I remember was chaired by the Selwyn District Mayor or Deputy Mayor, was that, yep, that was really great, it was exciting and so on, but that it should get played out in the, in district plans and of the constituent authorities, and it just doesn't happen. And so that's the disconnect, and I don't, I don't know how you actually managed to get that to happen, but what I would say at the moment is that it is not happening.
Good question, if I may, because I was really interested in your request, or like a second express bus for Horstall, other suburbs like that too. Earlier today, we had a request from another part of the city, Beckham actually, where in fact they were wanting a first bus in some key parts of the area. So I guess while your question, while your request is around patronaging, and because we expect lots more people, have you got any suggestions as to how we actually widen the coverage of our bus routes?
This is one of the real troubles of the way of the urban form that we have got to deal with, in the sense that, and, you know, like, we're obviously dealing with Christchurch City Council in this regard, and their city plan. So they've got an urban development strategy that talks about, about public transport spines and development along that, and that hasn't happened. There is, like, ECAN has, I think, is it demand responsive transport, is DRT, is that what you, I think is what you call it, in Tamara? And I think that that's going to really struggle in a place like Horstall. We've talked a bit about this at our meetings, but the problem with demand responsive transport is the time that it takes to connect from you being picked up in your house or whatever in Cloverdon, and getting to the bus stop where you have to wait for the next bus. So you've got two lots of waiting. And it comes back to that question that we had at the start, which is about how people actually, I've lost my thread there, that question at the start about making the service sort of timely, reliable and so on. And I think the DRT is a bit of a struggle in that regard. There's actually, I don't know if you're aware, but there's an outfit called Landor, which is London Councils, and they have a webinar coming up next Thursday on the bound responsive transport, and it's addressing exactly those sorts of questions. So I've signed in.
Okay, one more question. Thank you, councillor Hands.
Thanks, David. Really thorough submission, and thank you for going right into the detail of the levels of service. Just in terms of a broad concept around investment in public transport, you're asking for a more transformative investment, is the Residents' Association supportive of if we were to raise the target rate in order to undertake that investment to increase services?
That's an interesting question. As an association, we avoid putting rates in our submissions, because in our association, we will have people who despise every cent that they put in for ECAN, and you'll have other people who are saying, well, why don't you spend 10 times as much? And for us to arrive at a consensus would probably end up with blood in the streets.
That's a great political answer, it really is. And thank you for that. And I think that the challenges that you bring to us are in terms of the PT conundrum that we will face, and also urban form, which is something that we're paying attention to too. So thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Next submitter is David Winter. Welcome, David. The process is 10 minutes, nine minutes, the bell, and then questions. So when you're ready.
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to present here today. My name's Dave Winter. I'm a farmer from North Canterbury, well, just over the Wimack actually, quite wary there. Spent the last 20 years crafting my trade. Used to be quite fun here, I never really imagined I was going to end up sitting in here talking about rates and arguing about a few other things, but that's another story. I'm here to represent our family business, WJ Winderens Sons, we've been going for about 70 years. Obviously it's like a few setbacks along the way, but we're still here to tell the story. My main submission is around the financials of the long-term plan and the extravagant rate rise. Just to put things in context, probably option one and option two, there's not much difference for them, they're just as bad as one another. In terms of spending, anything that increases more than five percent, if I had all my suppliers say to me, I'm putting up a price of 25%. I'd be out of business tomorrow. So I thought that's quite interesting. So. I've got a cropping farm. About 250 hectares. That's looking at a rate rise of around about $1300. And also a shareholder dairy farm, it's looking at about $1400 going up. And just to bring in a few numbers around that, my total ECAN's rate bill will now be $11,000. So I'm probably going to demand slightly more value in terms of what I receive. Probably the other point I would make, that rate bill of $11,000 is made up of 75% is roughly in the general rate, which is based on the capital value of my farm. What probably really bugs me is the uniform annual general rate charge is only $45. So that's only about 7% if I look at your figures of your actual annual rates take. So that pretty much means to me as a farmer with a so-called big farm with lots of money, if I perceive to want to sell it, which I'm not really in the business of. So I'm not really sure why that is so low in comparison with other areas around New Zealand. I looked up my WDC rates last night and I see they're $120 for the. Annual, uniform annual general rate charge. Probably as a farmer, it appears as though looking at these documents that I'm going to be paying more for the user pay services of ECAN that I. Have to use in terms of consenting and monitoring and that, so that's all going to be going up. So I'm just quite interested to see that effectively I'm going to be paying twice if I'm paying for all this other stuff that I don't really use very often, like the public transport and. Everything else, so I would have thought that they're actually things that people use. So I am really a landowner as such, I don't have a lot of people attached, so I'm not really sure why. I should be paying twice. In terms of the. Costs of going up, I see there's a lot of work that's gone around the essential fresh water. And I know that this last 10 years around the ECAN table, you've spent peering the Canterbury Land and Water Plan and it's various different plan changes. So I see that. I'm not really sure why we're going to need to be spending more money on that when we've already been spending money on it. I know we have some new regulations that we have to comply with that have come from central government. However, we've probably been spending a vicinity of five or six million dollars a year on that plan. So I'd say that I'm not really sure why it needs to go, any more money needs to go into planning, just to update the plan that you've already done. I mean, the ink's not even dry, Plan Change Seven. And then probably it appears that the RMA is going to change, so I'm not really sure how and why. You can write a plan, you don't really know what the overarching rules are going to be and the implications of that. The other thing I would like to probably see some clarification around is probably this 14 million increase in the regional and strategic leadership. It'll be interesting to see where that extra 14 million is going to be spent and what I'm going to see for it. In terms of borrowing to keep going, I mean, as a farmer, if I have to go cap in hand to see my bank manager because I've had a bad year or two. He's not normally too happy to see me. In terms of borrowing to keep going, that's pretty much something you do to get out of jail after you've had a bad year. Unless you're buying an asset or building an asset, probably somewhere flash flood, this, you know, it's a bit of a debt and it's probably going to be paid off over time. So that's something that is okay. However, just borrowing to write some plans or do some things that feel good for the day, I think that's very, very dangerous. Way of doing business and I'd say it's very. Yep, not good at all, I wouldn't expect. I'd say it's economic suicide, actually. In terms of some of the spending, there's an extra 30 mil coming out of the Canterbury economy to fund this. What I see is lots of wants. Lots of nice to haves, however, we've just got to work out what the must haves are. Everything has a trade off. If something's broken, yeah, we've got to fix it. But normally if we're paying something, get fixed, something else has got to be delayed a bit. It's like I said, I've only got so much money to go around, so the more money that's going out my gate. On rates, it's probably something less I'm going to spend on the local community. Or doing nice things on the farm, i.e. farming less intensively. If I refer to the Wamak District Council Long Term Plan, I see their average increase over the next 10 years is around three and a half percent. If I look at the ECAN plan, it's about 58% total or five and a half percent every year. So in summing up, I'm just a grumpy farmer really, but. Any questions?
Hey, thanks Dave for coming in and representing your region and giving us a bit of a, a view of how you see what we're trying to do here in terms of the long term plan. Nothing is final, so the decisions that we make on the submissions will be made once we've filled all the submissions. Now, are there councillors that have got questions? Councillor Marshall?
Sure, thanks, and thanks Dave for coming this, this side of the Wamakariri, it's always great when someone's willing to cross the river. And I really appreciate your submission today. I was just wondering if you could give some examples around what you'd expect to see in return for your rates furlough.
What I'd like to see, it'd be quite good if I could get the Kipwe River cleaned out and Courtney River cleaned out. I know if my father was here today, he'd be absolutely banging on about you, because as he said, he's seen a lot of what he calls deferred maintenance and the riverworks and that sort of things. Since the good old North Canterbury cashmere board days. Don't think I quite remember them, I was probably still running around in that piece. So other than that, what else would I like to see? Probably just value for dollars spent, probably not so much wastage in a way. And probably like. I'm a farmer, I like bricks and mortar type stuff, like to see things in action rather than aspirational. Statements and plans, I guess you would say.
Any other questions from councillors? Okay, Dave, we're clear to the hook now, so thank you for that. That was great that you came in and did that and take some time out of your day to do that. As you said, you didn't think when you started you'd end up doing this, but this is how we make, this is how we make our decisions by listening to people like you, so thank you. The next presentation is from the Wamakariri District Council, Lead Board and Vice. Yeah, Neville, and Jim, you can all come to the table please. And we're in your handstand when you're ready to go.
Firstly, apologies for being late, both the Deputy Mayor and myself, where Neville Atkinson, we're at a funeral for. Well, no, an entity in our community like Dorma, who sadly passed away. He had wishes for his funeral, which started letting to be 55 minutes in length. That rival Catholic funerals, and I am a Catholic, and it was well over two hours, so he wouldn't have been impressed with that, but it was a lovely service for him. So we're running from the S R apologies. So firstly, I'm joined by Deputy Mayor Neville Atkinson. And also our new Chief Executive, Jim Harland, who I think it's day 16 on the job. I keep counting those until we get to the first month. So firstly, thank you for the opportunity to submit. And I want to acknowledge the strong working relationship our council has with you all. In particular, I'd like to especially acknowledge how much we enjoy working with Chair Jenny. And your Chief Executive Stephanie, both the Greater Christchurch Partnership and also the Canterbury Mural Forum. We appreciate that relationship we have. All councils are challenged to exercise restraint as New Zealand and the world recovers from COVID-19 pandemic. But economically and socially will have implications for communities for many years to come. First hand, we see the impact this has on families and businesses who have had to make hard decisions to survive. Wamakri District Council, and I'm proud of this, has responded to this challenge accordingly. And despite many calls from the community for expenditure, has faced over time both increased costs in funding them to cushion the impacts. We have also looked at the first and major projects as we don't think it appropriate to load additional burden on rate payers. At a time while our community are still experiencing the effects of COVID-19. Not only are councils challenged by COVID-19 impacts, as you know, we are entering a major era, era of reforms. That will impact on the roles and responsibilities of local authorities and other local and regional institutions for decades to come. Three Waters, RMA. Future, I had old local governments changed lately, now it's future for local government, sorry, future for local government. The restructuring of the polytechnic sector underway and the impending transformation of health service delivery are all upon us. With prospectively more reforms waiting in the wings. The cumulative implications of these changes are uncertain, but likely to be have a profound and I would say. It suggests an element of caution is appropriate before embarking on major new undertakings at this time. In light of this context, our council believes the rate rise proposed in the first year of ECAN's LTP is unacceptably high. And should be fundamentally reconsidered. This is a view we hear strongly and repeatedly from rate payers in our area. These points have also been echoed, echoed by our community boards and their submissions. Our council has not made, and I find it difficult to come here in this, this way, it's not certainly how we like to come about, but. We haven't made a submission like this to ECAN before because ECAN hasn't proposed an expansionary program over such a short time before. Communities have been asked to look past the percentage rise and consider the average dollar increase as similar to that posed by territorial authorities. This argument applies there is a license to consider such an increase every year, which should, in our opinion, not be the case. The rise sets the base rate imposed up a quarter and one year for the foreseeable future. It is not just a one-off increase. And it is proposed to be followed by a further 9% increase in year two. Suggesting a cumulative increase in ECAN's rates revenue based by third over the two, next two years. In general terms, a key driver for the extent of the rise has been cited as the regulatory requirements imposed by the new MPS of Freshwater. However, the linkage between those and the package of works attached to the proposed 24.5% rate increase. Has not been further defined in terms of both what it is and what it, sorry, both what is and will be delivered and, and in what timeframe to achieve compliance. And what metrics will be used to demonstrate the ensuing expected benefits of that outcome. In our opinion, realistic options have not been set out in the LT consultation document. Two packages of works at marginally different costs are leading to a 24.5 or an 18% rate increase are proposed. Specific options for reducing the issues facing the region and the implications of each of these options are not specified in the consultation document. Phasing of program implementation, save the marginal rate rise difference and the use of loan funding to smooth the financial impacts. Are not presented as options that we could see for Canterbury rate payers to consider. Page 14 of your CD states, environmental initiatives we need to progress, but are not yet required by legislation. While getting ahead can be applauded, getting ahead at a time when we face an uncertain economic climate, a future we suggest may not be wise. It is not at all clear what programs ECAN will be delivering to Wamakri residents, including the costs, benefits and timeframes for delivery. Apart from to a degree, the public transport. Urban rate payers in Wamakri are facing a 203% PT right, rates rise in four years. To be in 2021, 22, $155.74. This would be a 42% more than urban Selwyn and comparable with that of an equivalent $500,000 capital valued residential property in Christchurch City. The latter enjoying a demonstrably higher level of service. There has been no justification provided for this large increase for residents in Wamakri urban areas. Our submission details how in recent consultations by ECAN, the extent and rationale for proposed rate increases for enhanced bus service. Services is demonstrably different to that now proposed. We remind you of the commitment for a staged and gradual approach to the introduction of improved public transport offerings. As set out in your PT consultation material in late 2019. And note the staged WDC development of partner ride facilities in the district to help manage COVID related issues and rating impact. Page four of our submission draws attention to our submission reports of last year. Where we remind you of the argument that, sorry, the agreement that was reached with your staff following the consultation. We also include a link of the consultation that ECAN went out to our community stating maximum increase. Respectfully, respectfully, we ask you to please keep to what was agreed and follow the consultation that was had with our community. We all went out on a limb to support the greater good with partner ride. Anecdotally, it is pleasing to see and get feedback from users. I personally found the service excellent and the Deputy Mayor and myself have often come into meetings on the bus and it's a great service and we're pleased to see it. I am going to raise a topic that I wasn't going to, but it's around the Ashleigh Tree removal. I have raised it as a submission point because of our concern about the lack of progress. Following the good work that both Chair Jenny, Councillors Edge, Mackine, myself made to restore relationships with our community. We request the establishment of an ECAN lead steering group to work with our community to restore this area. You all, well, those who know, know I'm very frustrated at how long this matter is taking. It is unacceptable how long this matter is taking to get a, a simple committee in place or working group to work with our community. I can't understand why it can't have been put together sooner. And I've raised this frustration with both your councillors and Chair and staff. I want to make that point really strongly because I'm getting it in the neck in my community, who really want to see progress on this measure. It was very important for a large number in our community. To conclude. We all have points of difference from time to time. It shows the strength, I think, of our friendship and relationship that we can be open with those points of view. We strongly urge ECAN to consider intergenerational equity, slow programs down, loan fund where possible. And look to ways of smoothing the effect of the proposed rate increases in the LTP. This is what we do with our council, so we can minimize that impact and spread that over a number of years. Thank you again for the opportunity to submit and for hearing and considering our submission comments. Any just any questions?
Thank you so much, Dan, for being so forthright with us. Wouldn't have doubted that you wouldn't be when you walked through the door, so thank you for that and we'll take that on board. Questions from councillor Clearwater, councillor Edge?
Thank you, Dan. In terms of smoothing out, smoothing out the, over a number of years, are you also including the possibility of us borrowing more in order to do that?
Well, I think, I think that's implied definitely, that's what our council does. So we, I understand you're at the same rating as we do with Standard and Poor's, where they, are you with Standard and Poor's or Pach? Pach, well, same, similar rating agency. So it's never been a cheaper time and your balance sheet, from what I understand, has very little debt on it. So you could probably borrow cheaper than ECAN as a council, because we have older debt on our books. Though I'm not a financial expert, but we have people on our council staff that are, people like Geoff Millwood, our previous chief executive, Jim Palmer. Were experts in getting out there and getting us the best rates, hedging our bets and then making, hedging our debt. And then making sure that we took loans over a long period of time, we take loans over a 30 year period of time. That ensures intergenerational equity, it helps take those edges off some of those big spikes that you. big spikes that you experience. Don't want to tell you how to suck eggs, but that would be our firm recommendation to consider that policy.
Thanks, Dan. I acknowledge your issue regarding the Ashley Breaka Huri River and I'm sure that will be taken up by staff. In terms of the borrowing, just picking up your discussion there, on your, on your page one, you talk about in that third last paragraph there, that we should take the opportunity to do some borrowing. One of the prime functions for Environment Canterbury, perhaps the prime function is intergenerational considerations of the future. So we're thinking, but you're suggesting here that that if borrowing is for both capital and perhaps non-capital expenditure, that's something that we should consider, is it?
Just suggesting as an option for you to consider, that be it from us to tell you what to do. You know, we look at our own programme, it's ambitious at times, but there are some things we, we had to go to our community and say, we just can't do it this time. And then we, we had to take a strike, earthquake recovery loan. So we have over $100 million of debt which we absorbed all our earthquake-related projects into one. First, 1% of our rate rise every year is paying, gradually paying down that loan. But it was the fierest way of, of taking that debt off. If we'd have gone out with that hundred million, it would have crippled our rate payers and they wouldn't have thanked us for that. A youth council recently regularly had to manage their expectations. They have all sorts of great ideas that I'd love to see implemented, including a hydro slide at our pools, particularly Dudley and at Clive Boye Product Centre. But the cost of that is just simply, we just can't afford to do that at the moment. And it's nice to have. And it's just simply where we have got to in trying to managing our community's expectations at times. Sometimes you just can't implement programme as quickly as you'd like. Spreading that over a longer period, looking at options, does it all have to be done in one year? Can it not be staged? That is what we as a council consider all the time and I'm sure you will as well. Or we're humbly suggesting, it's just that it wasn't clear in these documents here that that had been considered. And perhaps that may be a way of helping ease that programme over a number of years to get greater buy-in. The point is well made, Mayor Gordon. I'm just aware that we have Councillor Mackay online, so I'm going to go to Councillor Hans for her question and clear if you've got something to say, maybe after Councillor Hans's talk.
I don't want to labour this because we've talked about the borrowing, but just, just for clarity, do you borrow for operational expenditure or things like policy documents regularly or only for capex?
No, we wouldn't borrow for operational work. We might borrow for a major renewal, which normally you try and find out appreciation, but if there was some significant asset which needed renewing, we didn't quite have enough money, we might borrow for the edge of that, but primarily around capital.
Thank you. Councillor Mackay, have you got something that you'd like to say? Obviously not. So thank you. I think we've come to the end of this, Mayor Gordon. Thank you for that. And as I say, thank you for being so forthright with us. And we certainly will consider everything that you've said in our deliberations. Good to see you, John. Good to see you, Neil. So Jane, Jane's our next submitter, Jane Demeter. I'll see you there, Jane. That's all cleared out, isn't it, Jane?
Kia ora ko tukua, koe Jane Demeter toku i noa. I'm not here as any representative or expert, but just as a member of your community who believes you need to hear a wide range of community views and representation and particularly from people who don't have a financial interest in what's under discussion. For me, your L T P is a bit tricky to comment on specifically without seeing all the underlying documents and data that you've had access to for the last six months. So stick to your key points and just highlight a couple of issues. Freshwater is and should continue to be your number one priority, in my opinion, given the current trends. We're ten years into the CWMS, goals and outcomes are not being met as anticipated. And as somebody who's been involved in the CWMS for right since the beginning, really, it seems that to date, first order priorities of environment, customary use, community and stock water supplies have not had their needed focus thus far. Time to change. One item in particular is the protection of groundwater. The water that runs through our aquifers is freshwater. And so protecting the habitat and ecosystems in aquifers is your responsibility under the RMA and appears to have no needed measures in place. Seems to me that protecting aquifer freshwater should have meant more due diligence before you embarked on MAR projects. Perhaps baseline aquifer endemic biodiversity studies should have been done. What if the possible changes, the outcomes, being changes to water chemistry and the oxygen levels in your aquifer when you upset the aquifer balance? And you can have the potential generation of ammonia, hydrogen sulphide and methane within your aquifers if you mess with the stigofonum and the biofilms too much. So it seems to me addressing this is way overdue, but not included in projects as far as I can tell. For me, enactment of current regional flow plans should be prioritised. That the Hurunui YO regional plan is going into its second generation without the increased flows set back in 2014 should not be. Here's hoping your increased monitoring is sufficient this time to deliver a robust plan. Sufficient and comprehensive enough because we got very little on the YO Ufa last time around. Monitoring data collection and enforcement of existing requirements should be stepped up, in my opinion. A data system's upgrade is essential because only then will you have confidence that you have reliable data. Random audits should be the norm to ensure compliance. I would suggest that you need to address the sources of issues rather than tinkering with symptoms. Retain more water in rivers because current effects are the effects of current takes. Very often significantly less, less than the 100% consented. So if we have these water takes and taking their maximum of 100%, we're going to see increased effects and yet much consideration is given to the effects we currently see, not what we might anticipate with 100% take. It's a bit hard to tell these days where we're at with the actual amount of takes, consented takes being taken because I haven't seen a report for, I think, 2014 was the last one that I know of. I would suggest that you need to set more stringent bottom lines to limit contaminant loading. Has there been an analysis of the loadings projected back in 2010 modelling compared with what is being currently measured? Is it what's expected or is there wide variance? If we are way in excess of what the 2010 modelling anticipated, we've got some serious work to do. Do plans need consequent adjustments? I don't know. I know the plans have limits around exotic tree planting in water-sensitive catchments, but I suspect we're probably sucking up way more water in the upper catchments than we ever really anticipated. Are those guidance and those limitations around exotic tree planting sufficient? I know that you have a major tree planting programme suggested in your areas of focus and I largely support native trees and shrub plantings, but I have some concerns. I see nothing about the word protection. And the protection of remnant patches, functioning ecosystems developed over millennia will give you far more bang for your buck and support your biodiversity than planting a million new trees, which would take decades, if not centuries, to develop fully functioning complex ecosystems. Have you had input from your ecologists on this? I guess I would comment, don't be lured into thinking riparian planting is your solution to pollution. And so as I look at those key areas that you highlighted, one of them is flood protection and infrastructure. And for me, there's a tension between the infrastructure related to flood protection and allowing our rivers to do the meander that they have historically done. When you burn up your river into these straight channels, yes, you flush that water right out to sea, but these days we need to be thinking about retaining our water. When you look at overseas projects where under, hmm, it's not Amsterdam. They've actually reintroduced the meander right under their buildings in, in the downtown and the port. It's not Amsterdam, it's in Belgium, I think, isn't it? Can't remember where. But I mean, we need to start thinking about slowing the movement of that water down a bit. And for the most part, I support the other key issues. So regarding option A versus option B, I support A. Because as I understand it, financial reserves were pretty much cleaned out by your predecessors. And I would say be bold and do the right thing by your grandchildren. In ten years' time, will they say that you have done enough? Kia ora, I welcome your questions.
Jane, your great experience in the environmental space has given us some pretty strong questions then and areas that I wouldn't have thought that we were going to go into, but, Lan.
Kia ora, thanks for your submission, Jane, and your great contribution to the CWMS over many years. My question was around just picking up on your, you emphasizing the protection factor within our biodiversity, biosecurity portfolio and your reference to our project Merurako, which is that restoration regeneration programme. And I agree, it hasn't been well communicated what's actually within that programme, but there is a diversity of where the intention is not only planting, but enrichment planting, predator control, fencing to protect. Within that vein, would you, the expenditure that we do have for that programme, would you prefer that that was solely for protection? Or do you think there is always capacity there for that restoration and new plantings?
There's always going to be room for both. But under your watch, you don't want those remnant patches disappearing off the geography of Canterbury. You know, when you have some amazing river terraces, you have the last of the dryland areas in Canterbury out in the West Melton Zone and you know, wetlands is the classic. So it's going to be a mix. It's, it's hard for me to comment, Lan, without seeing the specifics. But I mean, they're both important, but you can carry on doing the activities you mentioned for another 10 years. But if you haven't protected that patch and it's gone, it's gone. You don't get it back.
Thank you, Councillor Edge, Councillor Clearwater, then Councillor Elizabeth McKenzie.
Thanks, James. I just want to pick up on your comment regarding, in your submission ditching MAR and those other dilution mechanisms. Do you, do you think there's some urgency in Environment Canterbury to provide a wee bit more due diligence and research in the groundwater space before we contemplate doing any more of those things?
Indeed I do, which is why I specifically mentioned it, I called it out in my submission. We have an amazing balance going on underneath us. And I mean, if we stuff it up, again, you don't get it back. And it's an unknown aquifer, as I understand it. Each aquifer can have its own species residing within it. We don't know what they are. We don't know if we're pouring new ones in from other source, so I think it's our responsibility. And in a way, it's somewhat groundbreaking, but if not in Canterbury, where on earth are you going to do it in New Zealand? Because we've got the greatest sources of groundwater for New Zealand. You look overseas and, you know, they've stuffed up the giant aquifer in the US. We need to make sure we protect our groundwater here. And it has implications for Christchurch City's drinking water. It's, it was, it's an amazing opportunity before you start a project to do some baseline work and seemingly we didn't take that opportunity.
Thank you, Jane. Could I just remind councillors, note leading questions, please, testament to clarification, although that was a great answer, Jane. Thank you. Councillor Clearwater.
Thank you, Jane. You've given, put out quite a few challenges and so especially with option one, because a lot of funding is required as we, as we've been asking people. So, but I just want to ask you specifically around the concept of, of borrowing for natural capital, which can be seen as operational, given that the government have changed the law, so borrowing for natural capital is allowed. So I just wonder what your view would be on, on us say borrowing for operational or natural capital in order to fund some of the big projects?
I would anticipate that approval to, to do that was not given without due consideration of potential outcomes. So I, I don't know much about it per se, Councillor Clearwater, but it's new territory. And I really am not in a position to make a comment one way or the other.
Thank you. Jane, we're just about the end of it. Thank you. Hopefully you're going to continue with your work, which is always appreciated by us and, yeah. Fewer size, Jane, maybe. Okay, so the next presenter is Bernie Calder and then Jim Lapsley, then Ian Cumming. Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I have got more words written than I've time to speak. And also there's more words written than in my initial submission. And I wonder if I may hand these out now? Thank you.
Mr. Calder, if I just say to you that we, if you can highlight it, if you don't think you've got enough time, you just highlight those points. We will go through and read them and they will be part of our consideration, so. But you'll get a wee bell at nine minutes and then you'll have another minute. And then you'll have another minute, and then there's a question. So there, where you go, and your button.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Bernard Calder. Been battling for the outdoors and environment for most of my time, but perhaps the most in my better years from, when I'll say 25 to 40. And I got a little bit tired to knock my head against the brick wall of the wall of the um catchment boards and others. So I got back to a normal life for many years, including working at city council, the last five years of which was with the Water and Wetlands Engineering Section. I just dabbled with environmental issues now and again since then. But knowing that you're uh you were having a new plan with a revised direction. And I thought I would hop in and put my thoughts towards it on this occasion. I've skipped through a lot of what I've got here. Just to say, I'm pleased to see the new prescriptions that appear to follow on from the essential freshwater package of the government. Sort of agree with most of what has been written in these little prescriptions that were prefixed with LOS. I don't know what that means, but I pretty well agree with all of them. There's one LOS 13, was under biosecurity, what success looks like on pages 36 and 37. It mentions statutory obligations. They look pretty good, but I think there should be more problem mentioned, given to the use of section six of the RMA. I consider that farming businesses have had a fair suck of the sap regarding development permissions over the last 70 years or so. And it should be made clear that further conversions of indigenous habitat are unlikely to be in the regional or national interest. Any applications for further conversions of indigenous habitat should be processed using the preservation protection aspects of section six to the fullest. Of course, applications for track construction, fencing, pond, other essential things for farm operations should not be unreasonably withheld. And rate relief should be considered if an applicant is prepared to enter protective covenant agreements as an alternative to development. In my casual observations over the last 50 years or so, I've witnessed continuous deterioration in whole country native vegetation. Thanks, Mitchell, excepted, I'm pleased to say. Shrinking wetland areas, deteriorating lake water quality. And in the case of smaller rivers and streams in particular, both shrinking river flows and deteriorated water quality. The Land Development Encouragement Loan Scheme from 1978 to the 1980s gobbled up about 5% of the country's land area with consequent losses to our biodiversity. And lately, we've had a great water grab for dairy with associated development of more marginal lands. Also, according to David Mitchell of the press, some 2,000 hectares of riverbed has gone to private lands. All this loss, despite regional councils and affection for predecessors, in theory anyway, having a duty of care towards the environment. So I'm welcoming of a new direction towards water and land. Now, I did send in a lot of images to um to your staff. I don't see the appearance, so I'll do my best to get by without them. So I'll just carry on with my notes as they refer to some of those images. One was a bit of erosion in the old main road going down to into Akaroa, exposed lowland hill sites. I'm concerned for the water quality of our harbors and feel that more needs to be done to minimize soil run. It's almost too late for Littleton Harbour, given its history of dredge dumping. But I applaud the efforts to try and improve the situation here through the Littleton Harbour Catchment Management Plan. The most important, I think, or disturbing slide I have, and they might be able to drag up a few people later, considered was off the Mossburn area, Harbour Road up towards the Harbour River, it up to Lake Coleridge. I've visited there with, I think it was Andrew Dobson of the university about 1980. At that time, it was university endowment land, but I think. And it functioned something like the 99, or this is a perpetuity. But I think it has been freeholded. And one slide in of Google Earth in 2007 showed cultivation starting up near to these marvelous wetlands, boglands in the Mossburn area. There was another Google Earth reproduction I had, which showed the develop, developing, surrounding the core wetland areas with loss of biodiversity and hydrological buffer. And there was large areas of winter feed planted near sensitive bog and pondy areas, including adjacent to a pond near Lake Erieta, where it looked to me that muddy runoff could get into the wetlands. How did that get by the rules? So you can't see the pictures. And who at ECAN allowed that to happen in the last 10 years or so? A little bit, I had a couple of pictures of pines up in Stagans Bay area on Lindan Road. Before and after pictures of logging. I was there on one of the first trips throughout the Kaikuaa earthquake. But that wasn't the convoy, couldn't take a photo. So it was just a sea of mud, and it was the next time I visited also. This, the East Coast North Island and Kaitiri Terry, every disaster. Is that one? Right, better go. Seeing what's happened to the clarity of water in the Maukau sounds has convinced me we should be very careful where pines are planted. I did have a video of jet skis in the, change topic, in the La Waimea Kairi. There's definitely a need for motion cams, real time, motexes. Stuart Scully near the boat blocks and places, and a lot of other places. I'll just finish off to say, I'm very disappointed with the experience with ECAN consent offices. It's work that was to be done on behalf of Nectar, which is the same as we had skirt here on National Hall. Local bodies in contracts, et cetera. So the earthquake material is supposed to be put on private land. They mucked up their plans. The consent officer said, it's okay if you put it in the riverbed. 3,000 wells, it's actually about 2,000 meters.
Betty, we're going to have to stop you there because we're going to go over and there might be some questions around. Can I just say, this is a bit difficult because we haven't got your photos to follow this. We will make sure we'll make, we'll make sure that we do get those and that we do uh, beg your pardon? We do get those achievements, that we do get those and we do follow through on this. But I take it the tenor of what you're saying here is that you're unhappy with the way that the environment is being treated by others? And you want us to be a bit more stringent than that? Is that the tenor of what you're trying to say here? Your button, Betty, please. Your button, sorry.
And congratulations for firmly taking on a new direction.
Sorry for the fact that we haven't been able to follow that, but we will make it our business to do that. And we will get back to you on LOS. LOS is Levels of Service. I've talked to the chief executive and we will contact you on that in terms of the meaning and ad hoc. You're welcome. Um, now we've got Jim Lapsley. Jim Lapsley, and Jim's got a written, some more written material here, Jim, that we're going to hand around.
Yes, please. Yeah. Right, good go. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to have my say to you guys. Like previous speakers, I've written out far too much for 10 minutes, so I'm going to abbreviate it as much as I can. But my submission is very simple. I just want to bring awareness to ECAN, Canterbury Regional Council, of the increased riverbed levels in the Waimea Kairi River and the potential for that to turn into a flood. It's got other consequences from that riverbed level rising. So I'll just read out a few, a few of my points here. My submission concerns the riverbed level in the river in the vicinity of State Highway 1 Motorway Bridge. In short, I consider that the riverbed level has risen significantly over a long period of time. And this is contributing to adverse effects for recreational uses of the river. It's also increasing the potential for major flooding about the lands adjoining and nearby the lower portions of the river. In my view, flood risk is increasing due to the steady rise of the riverbed level. I'm very confident of the rising riverbed levels due to both anecdotal and factual evidence that I've outlined below. The jet boat in Canterbury access ramp is immediately upstream of the Motorway Bridge, and it provides an extremely good reference feature for the riverbed water levels. The concrete ramp was erected in 1976, and it was after much investigation and research. The ramp location was selected and the ramp constructed, taking into account the flow and depth of water in that location. So I'm making this submission just personally, but I am supported by Jet Boat in Canterbury. So if you've all got this submission here, if you turn over to the back page, I've got a 1991 Canterbury Regional Council Flood Plan Management Plan. And if you turn over to the page where it's got the arrows on it, it said the plan is a result of four years of work by the council staff assisted by an independent technical advisory group, which reviewed and analyzed the initial investigatory research on the plan's progress. Outside technical expertise was used where needed. A 16-member community advisory committee representing a range of community viewpoints was also involved. And under the flood plan management options, number five, development of gravel extraction is ticked off in every single option. It says here that the Plan Three was their best option and continuing gravel extraction below cross-ramp to reduce the buildup of the riverbed. So if you go to the pictures I've got, and photo number one and two shows pretty graphically how much the riverbed has risen. Photo number one was in 1992. We don't know the actual river flow, but I took a photo just a couple of days ago on photo number two, and that's only, it was 49 Qmex, which is the river, that's very low flow level. On, on the next page, you can see photos three and four. And you can see the pile caps on the, under the bridge. In photo three, you can clearly see at least half of the pile cap. Photo four, it's pretty well nearly underwater, just illustrating how much the riverbed has risen. Photo five and six shows 1974, what the vegetation was like around the ramp area. That's, these photos are in the same area. And number six, it's got all these massive willow trees right down through there. And about two hours ago, I just got a photo from Graham Rexworthy from 1971, again showing the pile caps under the bridge. He said that was at high tide, and you can see the still water around his boat trailer. Graham said flounders could be seen between the two bridges. And at low tide, the piles under the pile caps could be clearly seen. So I'm no divinity, but I drew a bit of an article in the back there, too. I'll never get a prize for art. So back to the second page, item number seven. I went into the river engineers and got the Environment Canterbury do cross surveys across the river. And I got the survey results for the cross-section immediately below the Motorway Bridge. In 2012, it was 0.96 of a meter above sea level. That's the riverbed aggregate, not the water level, the riverbed aggregate. In 2019, it was 1.88 meters above sea level. So if you extrapolate that out, we estimate there's been 25 years of absolute minimal aggregate extraction out of the riverbed. You could take it as given that there's probably three meters of riverbed aggregate rise in that section of the river. So I, I'm not an expert on this. You guys have got fantastically qualified river engineers, but all I'm trying to raise awareness is that the riverbed has risen significantly. I estimate that that three meter rise, the river travels at about 15 kilometers an hour in a flood. That's 625 cubic meters per second on top of any flood that comes down. So you guys have got a problem with potential of flooding Christchurch and Kaipoi. The Wright's Cut was proposed in 1865. It was finally put through in 1930 to stop the river going out through the South Branch and out through the Kaipoi River. And it's, it's rising so much that it's likely to go back down through those channels again, if you're not careful. So that's my brief outline. The actions I'd request is that you guys have a serious look at how much gravel is coming out of there and get the riverbed level back down to the Wright's Cut level, which was specifically put through there to stop flooding into Christchurch and Kaipoi. Have a chat to Jet Boat in Canterbury, because our ramp is now virtually a huge problem for us. It was great for about 30 years, but now the riverbed's come up so much that it's getting to a dangerous point. It creates a burn in the riverbed that jet boats can't get out past. And I've seen some idiots just blast their way over the shallow water, straight out into the river. And there's other boats that use that area coming and going, and it's going to be an accident. There's one more thing. Some of our older members can recall the tidal interchange between the high tide and the river used to be above the Motorway Bridge. It's now way back down about the old Highway Bridge. And there's a serious problem with undercurrents around that area. And there's been so many drownings in that area as a consequence of the river, the riverbed rising. And it's, it's combined with the piles of the old bridge that's creating that undercurrent. There's been multiple, multiple drownings there. And I've got an example of that in my submission. So that's basically it.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for the photos and the history. That's 1991, which I haven't seen that before, so that's good to see. So questions, councillor Ian McKenzie?
Jim, just to, you say you're submitting on your own, but you are a member of the Jet Boat Association, is that? Is it that? And that's where you get a lot of your information.
Oh, thank you very much for coming in and making this really important submission to us about protection of Christchurch and Kaipoi areas. I think it's really good, excellent observations to assist us. I'm just wondering, has your Jet Boat Association got any comments to make about the situation at the Wai Makariri Lagoon in that area? Right, so you mainly go upstream.
There's a lot of jet boaters who are non-members that go down to that area, but I'm only a member of the Jet Boating Canterbury. We've got 2,300 members, and there's only about 30% of the people who use our ramp are members of Jet Boating Canterbury or Jet Boating New Zealand. So we're actually paying for maintenance of that ramp on behalf of all jet boaters, even though it's on ECAN land. We own the concrete, but you guys own the rest of the land.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you coming in. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Jim. Thanks for your submission. Just a process here, Eric. Can you hear me? You're online. We can see you. You're prominent in the council chamber, but we've probably got about three goes before you, so I don't know whether you want to turn your camera off probably, because you're very prominent. Not saying we don't like looking at you, but, you know. We're going to do, so next is Ian Cumming, then Lindsay Carswell, and then Eric. So you're probably 20 minutes away, Eric.
Good afternoon and thank you for allowing me. I won't be taking 10 minutes. I think I'll probably be taking about two. Now, you've read my submission, which is a brief history of the service that Beckenham used to have and how it was destroyed by inept really decisions. And we get something like the 115, which required people to wait an hour for the next bus and then wait at Sidnum to collect connect. But if we went back earlier than that, there was an innovative service that the Huntsbury Bus continued down, went up to Huntsbury, came down Major Aiken Road and made a great big loop which went through Sidnum, which made probably a more interesting ride for the drivers, actually. And yes, earlier than that, like many of these suburban services you've got now, they don't stop at the interchange they go through. And our Beckenham service used to go all the way through to Bishopdale. So basically, my submission is a plea to restore a service to the heart of Beckenham, which we used to have. The population is more than it used to be. And we've got more people at the Old People's Home, more new villas down there, more children. So that's enough. I want to have a serious, serious look at trying to work something that would take the bus route through Beckenham, through Birdwood Avenue, up north, through up to slightly circulate Huxley, and then round, in fact, end up at the interchange. So that's basically all I want to say, but I want to make a couple of points here. Masks. I was in Dunedin last weekend, and I took about four trips on the bus. Everybody, including the driver, bar one, on all those buses was like this. And then I'm in town here in Christchurch, and you're lucky if you've got three people out of 20 wearing it, and as often as not, the bus drivers aren't. So the mandated wearing of masks in Christchurch needs, we probably need a slight lockdown or something to get people, get them out of their complacency. And now, the innovation of the colour of the buses, what you've done now, we used to have all red. I didn't see that as a problem. What you've done, and I think it's very clever, is there are very large signs now. They're all the same buses. But I would suggest it ought to be in uppercase. So we've got Beckenham, not Beckenham, Kashmir, Big C, and it would fit and make it easier, harder for hard-of-hearing, hard-of-seeing people. So look at that, to increase the size of the lettering, but it won't force it to be squeezed to one side. And the other thing is, I was just going to end up by saying that I scored for this organisation once upon a time. Didn't get in, but you can see that I was going fast, free and frequent. Now, we've got, we're getting fast, we've got frequent, and I think I saw somewhere in that long-term plan you could be looking at free. So I encourage you in your long-term thing to think about free, fast and frequent, and think of Ian Cumming, who still travels on the bus pretty well every day, and I know that route. But I might have to say just finally about, I walked down to get the number one bus, and I'm finding it harder at my age now. It takes seven going on eight minutes to get there without trying to puff. So that's all I want to say. Bring it back, please.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you for that. There's no decisions we can make on putting a bus down there, right? But we will consider your submission. Lauren?
Thank you, Ian, and thanks for picking up on the free bus investigation aspect. And I'm interested, when you ran for council, how did you propose to fund free buses? And has that changed, you know, between now? Like, do you have any thoughts? Oh, you put your button on.
Oh, I see. I didn't realise that. Sorry. Yeah. Okay, absolutely. I thought it was still live. No, this was way back in Transport Board days. And I remember that there were certain major cities in the world that had free transport at that time, and I would have presented that had I got as far as getting on. But you can't beat politics, you see. Can't beat...
That's right. There's some progressive councillors, I guess, that have got that in the back of their mind, but we'll see how we go on that end. So if there's no more questions, thank you for coming in. Slightly more than two minutes, but enjoyable.
Well, I've got you back on track, I think, time-wise perhaps. Thank you.
Lindsay Carswell. Lindsay, you're up next. And then... And Lindsay, you've got a handout that's going around? Some notes. And Eric, I suppose, if you can hear me, Eric, you're next, after Lindsay.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Lindsay Carswell. I'm a retired schoolteacher, and I taught economics and accounting for a number of years. I've seen students, that's year 13 or seven forms, and I have a Bachelor of Commerce degree from the University of Canterbury. First of all, I want to say that I support option one regarding the implication of the National Policy Statement on Fresh Water. Where I disagree, however, is that I did not agree that the costs of adoption should be part of the general charge. And the reason why I'm saying that, that is, I believe, I consider it to be unreasonable and unfair to charge people a fee or a charge for something that neither created or benefited financially from having support. The notes I've handed out, that have been handed out, I just want to go over a couple of things, a bit of research over the weekend. Uncle Google. About various organisations commenting on the polluter pays principle. The first one is a piece there from the London School of Economics. The second piece by the organisations, the OECD, the Organisation for Economic and Community Development. Both of these organisations argue in favour that the polluter pays principle. London School of Economics, just probably the sense out there, those who produce the pollution to bear the cost of management and prevention with damage, et cetera, et cetera, to human health and to the environment. The OECD one's quite interesting. The sentence said, now that the polluter pays principle must be regarded as a mainstay of membership countries' environmental policies. New Zealand is a member of the OECD. And there's the OECD saying that it should be the mainstay of doing it. And that policy document, their actual fact, was written in 1972, in around almost 50 years. Now, I'm not going to talk about the economics of pollution, the terminology that's used. Some of you will know them, what they're saying, and some of you have probably never heard of them. When it's called externalities, where social costs and private costs and so on. Quite an interesting topic actually to look into. But as I said, the experts around, or you'll have, will know all about those sorts of things. Also, I'm not going to go into the pollution itself, because I'm not an environmentalist. I have no science training in that area. But the key point I want to really say is that those that caused the pollution should pay. The clear message I want you to take on board, I think it is grossly unfair. For instance, I notice with transport, people at Christchurch pay the bulk of it, and so they should. The rural areas don't. I noticed with your water user charges, this is note two. You used to charge the water monitoring and everything as part of a general charge, and that was important. Now, I see it as on a user pays basis, as it should be. And that's about all really I want to say, but there's really interesting articles there. I actually emailed all this through and I hope that you might have actually had it sent to you. If you want to Google any of these links I've given here, you can always get in contact with me, and I can email you the original documents, so you can copy and paste them. I think it'd be a bit of a nightmare trying to copy all those. There's the south. You'll be here for the next couple of years trying to figure out where you've gone wrong. But anyway, that's it. That's all I want to say.
Hey, Lindsay, thank you very much for that, and it's probably a good idea that we do that, to exchange that email, and somebody here on your way out will be able to help you with that. But we've got a question from councillor Sankal.
Thank you for that, Jim. I don't think anyone disagrees around polluter pays. But I'd just like some enlightenment from you on externality. So we have externality to both the demand and the other side of the equation, and they're positive and negative. How do we balance that equation if we only focus on one of those externalities and not balance out the positive side as well?
I really, it's a typical one to answer. I needed a bit more research for the south. You know, I know there are positive externalities, like a rural person fencing off streams and doing all that sort of work and planting trees around rivers. That's a positive. But it's the negatives which are dominating all this at this stage.
Thank you for that. I guess the challenge from councillor Sankal may be to start your career over again and write some papers for it, but thank you for coming in and making those points to us. Somebody will catch you on the way out and get that link from you, and yeah, thank you for showing up. So our next two presenters are online, and they are Eric Duff. Are you there, Eric? Here he comes. Your microphone maybe, Eric. Is it on?
Is it better?
Yeah, you can go now. Thank you.
I'm just in my second year farming out in the back of Mayfield, dry land sheep beef farm. And I want to voice my concern about the 92% increase in our rates, which is deemed unfair and directed at agriculture in an intensive area in mid-Canterbury. I've researched the rate calculator on ECAN website, and in my old flat in Christchurch, it's got an increase of 2% to 3%, of about 70 bucks. I searched the farm in Waimata, it's increased by 16%. And we're obviously hit with a 92% increase, which is my main point I want to get across. This rate, this increase doesn't include our local water scheme, which will get overhauled, because we're on a permanent bore water notice, and we can't afford to keep it running. So we're lumped with that cost as well with the new fresh water regulations. I've also read in the articles and advertised that all the rates are lifting by 24 to 18%. But, I mean, that's not true or fair. A lot of farmers locally don't fully understand how serious the rate rises are and don't actually know that they're right. A lot of people think they're 8%, not 80. You know, a lot of people have actually laughed at me when I said the word 80%. They said, no, it'll be eight. I hope that, I hope that it is eight. I hope that someone put an extra zero on there just by accident. Lastly, oh, there are a few other things I want to say. With, obviously, the nitrates are the big issue on reasons why our rates going up. And climate change is obviously another one, which is not an environmental Canterbury issue. It's a head government issue, and we need direction from the government. It's not the council's job to be sorting out the climate. We've tested our nitrates in our water locally, and they're all around 2 or 2.2. The highest was a well that was beside the Rangatata River, and we're farming right on the Rangatata River. So the water coming out of the Rangatata Gorge was the highest out of our three testing sites, which was the Montalto Water Scheme and a cafe, Lushington's Cafe in Tinmore, which was two. The well was 2.2 and the Montalto Water Scheme was 1.9. I don't think there's enough data to increase our rates when the data's not there. I don't think throwing money at it is the answer. It's too, it's a too large an increase to handle all that money efficiently. It needs to be small increases at once. Yeah, and lastly, I mean, yeah. We've been subsidised through the 80s. We lost our subsidies. Farmers either went broke or they tried to survive by intensifying their operations. Irrigation come to mid-Canterbury and we've intensified, and that was under an ECAN umbrella and under a government umbrella. Now we're getting punished by 92%, and that's not even getting water to our farm. Yeah, that's my point, I think. I've got most of my point across.
Yeah, Eric, thank you. Look, it's pretty difficult on this medium, but thank you for taking the time and making those points to us, and especially when you're a second-year farmer. Now, have we got, is there any questions? Councillor Mackenzie, Ian Mackenzie?
Thanks, Duffy. The bore down in Tinmore you refer to, do you know how deep that is?
17-metre well. The water was tested by Mayfield Heinz.
Thank you. Anybody else? councillor Hand.
Hi, Eric. How are you? Just a question in terms of what it means for you. Can you explain or clarify for us, if this rate rise went ahead within 90%, what impact does that have on you as a young farmer?
$4,000. $4,000, and that doesn't pay for my stock water or my drinking water. I can't even drink the tap water. We're on a permanent bore water notice. So we've got challenges of getting stock water and drinking water to our farm to meet the fresh water regulations. But I mean, the $4,000 that I paid ECAN won't do that. So, yeah, does that answer your question?
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, Eric. Thank you for taking the time again, and I think we'll let you go. Okay, Eric, thank you for taking the time again, and I think we'll let you go, get back to farming. Thank you for taking the time. The next, I think we've got Sean Baker. Sean, are you online, Sean?
Yes, I am.
Well, when you're ready, Sean, you can go ahead.
Okay. So my name is Sean Baker, I'm a student at Lincoln, I'm studying a bachelor in environmental management. So mainly going to talk about the transport proposals that I talked about in my submission. Submission, I'm just going to start by saying that I support option one, the twenty-four percent. Right, why is the main reason I support it? I believe that ECAN, it's important that ECAN has the resources to fight against climate change and environmental derogation. We only got nine years left to make massive reductions in our emissions, and it's very important that we start have access to clean water. We have seen that how, if we continue to derogate, we will lose more PCs and our diversity will be at more risk. So I'm going to start by talking about the my ray. I'm not a resident of Tinmore, but I do believe it should stay. But because having read how the positive feedback has gotten at Tinmore area, and I think it's best we continue to build those strengths rather than from now on. And I believe it should be expanded to other areas around Canterbury. I think a lot of areas may have stayed small in population, but they have, but overall they have grown. Most areas are mainly supermarkets and casinos, they take longer than fifteen minutes. Fifteen minute walk, and that could be very difficult for people with health issues, disabled, all that. So, and I think for people who do, in a lot of areas especially, do not have good walking and social infrastructure, especially between small city, small towns, small towns. So I think a lot for people who can't depend on other transportation, they're practically stranded. I also believe that introducing my ray to other small towns will help reduce more distance trips, which are responsible for one third of total car trips and a much more carbon emissions than longer journeys. And also, and especially in the south and in my regular routes, it can be used as a free bus system for people who do live a bit further out from towns like Lincoln and Moreston. They may live in farms and all that, and they want to use public transport. They may be able to access it more easily, and it reduces the amount of cars parked around like bus park and white facilities and major suburban bus stops. Another thing I talked about, I talked about rapid transit. I believe that as a rapid, that is a big huge priority in the next ten years, especially with car congestion in the growing area growing. And I think if we don't do anything, we're going to start to experience what we've seen in Auckland and Wellington. So I propose like a five year commuter rail trial, especially from Moreston to Rani, in your world. And wherever it be, I'll take route throughout the middle of the city. And more speed buses in Kai Pooh and Lincoln. Lincoln, and I think, and I think while I'm working on the rapid transit business case that's currently being done, I think something should be done now while, before it gets, because by the time it probably gets organised, we organise it, every chance congestion will get worse. So I talked a bit about how much it may cost based on the ECAN study that was done in twenty fourteen and the council's previous business case into commuter rail that was published in an article in the pre-start November, using the figures from NEAR, a possible estimate cost could be around one hundred and one million. I think it could be achieved very easily until we were open to Hamilton, where it shows how easy it could be done with existing infrastructure. So it shows it can be achievable, and it helps that mode shift begin now. And it helps, as we start planning this rapid transit network, we can actually see what works well and what does not. I want to talk a little bit about funding, particularly fares. I believe there should be less dependence on fare revenue as the primary trigger. As long as every fares keep increasing, increasing it makes public transport more attractive. Attractive to many people, cost is a major barrier to many people. People, and I believe we should move more to a flat fare system. Have you read my map for this? I've posed like a distant base fare where someone pays like a dollar in a zone and across another zone, I pay two dollars, and it will make it very easy for people, make more people get into public transport and help people get around. And it shows the massive savings to many people based on the current bus fares. And I do believe that ECAN should lobby for more subsidies from the ECTA to at least cover maybe sixty percent of costs. Of course, we have, like the central government and the campaign in twenty seventeen have committed to a hundred million dollars of funding, wherever that could be used. But that could, but based on the figures that I got from my commuter rail trial, it would cover the, it should cover the funding of the trial. Okay, that's pretty much, thanks.
Hey, thank you, Sean, and it's great to see the amount of work you're putting here. There's dollars here and there's routes here and there's all sorts of stuff here. So that's a really good resource for us to look at. Councillor Ian McKenzie has a question.
Thanks, Sean. Sean, I note that you think we should not pay, you shouldn't collect as much from fares. How are you proposing to fund, other than increasing the subsidy from government? How are you proposing to fund all this transport cost?
Sorry, but obviously, like besides more central government support, like we also will have, likely to add some money, of course, in other areas, like from rates. And all that, I think it's, I think it's, like, they can fill in the void, other void, et cetera. I think it's just very important that, I think, like if we still get some fare revenue based on the system, I think if more people use it, you would generally get more money out of it. I think it's very important that we really want to start seeing this mode shift. If we start, we start making it, I think, like playing costs as a barrier and it helps. People get, and if people use it more frequently, more money will be generated through the fare system. So it's a mix of, it's a sort of mix of sixty percent central government and forty percent from other areas, including Bahrain or rights. But I think it's very important in the long run that, one, two, I think the benefits in the long run is that mode shift in social and environmental and health benefits that does create for people here in Christchurch.
Hey, thank you, Sean. I've got another question from councillor Farm.
Sure, Sean, thanks so much for your submission. I really just want to pick up on the points you make about acting urgently across all these aspects of your submission. So yes, transport is a key one, but you also picked up on climate change and biodiversity and the like. One view that we're, you know, hearing at the table today and yesterday is to be quite conservative with our expenditure, particularly in light of COVID. And I just wanted, I wondered if you wanted to comment from your perspective, whether you think that financial conservatism is needed at this time, or could you expand on that?
I'm sure, I think no one can deny it's a tough time right now, but I think, but I think sometimes, but I think sometimes, like, like, we've only got nine years left to, like, to prevent the bit of climate change, climate change, and like, sometimes it's not, sometimes it's not best to play the safe option. I think if we really want to see this change, we really need to commit, need to commit to spending. And it may sound a lot of money right now, but I think it's very important. But I think the benefits we get in the long run outweigh that. I think it's very important that we invest in projects that do create many benefits to people and our people here in Canterbury. So I think we should more see what the, more look at what, how is it going to, how is it going to help people here in Canterbury? How is it going to protect our environment? Environment, if it's going to make major difference, we should invest, we should invest down that road. Road, that's pretty much how I'll probably see it through, how much of a difference it's going to make and make to people and our environment.
Hey, Sean, thank you. We're just about out of time for this now, so, but thank you for coming online and doing that. Thank you for your submission and all the time you've put into it. And we'll take your submission once we do our determination on where we head forward, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Okay, councillors, we're back here at Hubba Three, and the Hubba Three submission is Christchurch City Council. Welcome to submission process for our LTP. I think we're waiting on one, so you can make a start if you like. Yeah, yes, just push the button.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I noticed I caught you just after a tea break, so hopefully that's a good thing. And I'm noticing the temperature in this room. I'm guessing that you guys are trying to pretend it's still summer or something. My walkover from the city was through cold air, so I'm certainly feeling the benefit of the warmth in this room. But we, I'll start with some introductory general comments. We certainly welcome the opportunity to be heard in support of our submission on your long term plan. Our councils actually face many of the same challenges as we're developing work programs and budgets over the next ten years. And we need to meet those challenges against the backdrop of significant reforms that we're all aware of. Obviously, local government, water, planning and health, obviously, is the latest one of those four as well. So we're faced with planning for the next ten years in a rapidly reforming and potentially significantly changing environment. So it's vital that we work together, and it's vital that we, as the city council, recognise that Environment Canterbury are helping to coordinate and lead many of the collaborations, much of the work that will actually end up, we hope, delivering solutions for our region. So having made those general remarks, I'll now refer to some more specific issues. Both of our long term plans emphasise the importance of climate change action, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and better understanding the impacts of climate change. We're investing significantly to support the uptake of public transport in Greater Christchurch, and it's important to continue collaborating with all of our partners to maximise the investment of the, to maximise the value of the investment that we are making in our long term plan and that you're proposing to make in yours. We need transformational change in the transport networks, which connect the city and the region to meet our climate goals and in fact to improve the wellbeing of our communities, providing accessible and affordable low emission travel options. And this is going to be crucial to achieving our climate change and other objectives. Urban form, of course, is also key to reducing emissions and driving change in travel choices, and in fact, driving changes in the need for travel. We need to plan our city and in fact the subregion so that communities live closer to the services, to the infrastructure, to the activities that they want to access. The link between transport and urban development needs to be front and centre of the transport conversation and cannot be underestimated. Water is the next area that I'd like to refer to, and it's another area where we need to keep working together as councils and also with the community on water issues. There are new and recently amended national environmental standards and national policy statements that we need to implement, and we support robust science and strong compliance monitoring that gives effect to Temana Otewa. We're also working with you on groundwater, and our submission notes particular concern at the emerging trend of rising concentrations of nitrates across the regions, and we would welcome clarification of your strategy for addressing this. And I'll point out that this is a particular concern that's been the subject of quite a lot of discussion at the city council and on our submission that we lodged to your LTP. Your consultation document seeks feedback on systems like the Heinz Managed Aquifer Recharge Project. And whilst we welcome this system as a way to address existing contamination, we would far prefer that you support investment decisions that seek to avoid contamination of water bodies in the first place. On biodiversity, we support your biodiversity initiatives and the plans that you've got to better, to get a better understanding of biodiversity trends and the impacts of various work streams in the region. And we also note the importance of dry land ecosystems as well as the wetlands, which are well referenced in your consultation document. You're obviously planning to do a lot of work in the biodiversity space, and that's something that we support. Community resilience, we're very keen that work on the Canterbury regional policy statement be progressed. Prioritising this will help ensure regional work and the council's work on coastal hazards can better inform each other. Another area where the work that we're each doing needs to be done in a joined up way, and we support the work that you're planning to do in that regard. Air quality remains a matter of concern for our council, and this is exactly the same as we've said in previous long term plan submissions. This remains a concern. We encourage the provision of adequate funding for proactive compliance and enforcement of activities impacting on air quality, including quarries. You'll often hear commentary around enforcement action, around the quarries, around the organic processing plants. We're keen that you resource the compliance monitoring and any enforcement action that may be required adequately so that it's able to be done effectively. And we also wonder whether it's an option for you to charge more or a higher proportion of the cost of enforcing consents to the consent holders themselves, so that those that are driving the need for the activity are bearing some of the costs. Christchurch City Council has received clear messages from the community around delivering our core services well, addressing rates affordability, and also investing for the future and bringing new facilities on stream. And there's some of the core planks, some of the foundations of what you see in our own long term plan. Your draft plan is ambitious, and it puts a clear question to rate payers on whether you should step up the pace. You'll be reviewing all of the submissions that you've received, as we are for our own LTP, and I and the council wish you all the best for that process, and thank you again for the opportunity to be heard today. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Andrew, and thank you for coming in and being so direct with us in terms of the concerns that you have. And I will reiterate that our relationship is probably as good as it's been since I've been at council. So congratulations to those people, and the GCP get strong rest we go. So councillors, questions? Councillor Higgy.
The question related to your item thirty-four about the budget that we have for the regional spatial plan. Just wondering if you could elaborate a wee bit more on your thoughts about that. You're suggesting we haven't got enough funding in the long term plan for that.
In line with the comments I've made on other work areas, I think it's essential that work is funded to be delivered in the way that it needs to be, so that we're not seeing resource constraints affecting the ability to do work, to do work well, or to do it in a timely fashion. So those comments apply to a number of areas in your LTP, and I think the paragraph that you're referring to is another one where that really comes into play insanely.
Thank you, Peter, Neil, Andrew, for coming along.
Thank you, um, Peter, Mia, Andrew, for coming along and giving a presentation and submitting on our submission. It's really good to, um, get your perspective and, um, thank you for saying that we're all working well together because we are, and I think that's really, uh, praiseworthy for the whole region actually and across Canterbury, but also particularly to the Greater Christchurch Partnership. I'm interested in your comments on, um, pa- paragraph thirty-seven about the behaviour change that we've referenced under customer marketing and engagement around transport, forming our public transport. Um, have you got any ideas? Um, you don't normally come to the Greater Christchurch Partnership, but you know, we have, we have mentioned it lots of times, but we don't get much traction about it. So I'm wondering if you've got some ideas for us about how we can get some traction around behaviour change?
Yes, certainly. I mean, there have been some challenges despite the improvements that have been made to public transport routes, public transport networks, public transport infrastructure. There remain some challenges of actually getting people onto public transport. Um, some of the other mode shifts interventions that we've made, the city's far more walkable than it used to be. The city is far more bikeable, bikeable than it used to be, and we are seeing behaviour change in those areas. Um, public transport, um, certainly seems to be one area which is, um, more difficult to get people out of their cars and onto the buses. Um, I mean, really, that's about having services that are of the right quality that go from where people want to travel from to where they want to go to in the easiest and most seamless way possible. So minimal changes, direct services, services of the right frequency at times when people want to travel. I know from my own experience, what's got me back onto the bus is the ten-minute frequency on the number twenty-eight in the mornings and the evenings and the express bus from Littleton to Christchurch to the interchange here. Um, that's what's got me back onto the buses. So I think that demonstrates that service is going where people want to go at the time they want to travel and quickly and efficiently is what this is all about. Um, I don't know what consideration there is of, um, increasing the reach of the network. There are a number of routes that were discontinued by the previous Environment Canterbury. Um, and I certainly would welcome, and I know there's been some discussion at our council table around, um, re- looking at reinstating some of those routes or putting additional routes on where there might be gaps in the network. Um, from my own experience, the five-three-five from Littleton through to Ferrymead and Eastgate was one of the routes that was discontinued. Um, at the time that we submitted on that, we talked about a route connecting, um, logic, logical connections between, um, neighbouring communities, um, where people might naturally choose to go rather than necessarily coming right the way into the city. Um, but yeah, I mean, the, the quality, the frequency, um, the confidence that people have got in the service, um, we're certainly committed with our investment in our own L T P to continuing to provide good infrastructure. So that's, um, bus lanes, bus stops, um, and the other infrastructure that we're responsible for. And certainly we would encourage Environment Canterbury and all of our partners to be investing at the levels that are required to deliver that transformational step change which is required, particularly in the public transport space.
Thank you, Kyo, Andrew. Um, in regard to air quality, you talked specifically about some source, at some point, sort of discreet issues. Would you be able to offer any comment on general and the air quality? Or do you feel, or what other just?
Yeah, I mean, I, I use quarries and the O P P as examples of where there may be a need for, um, compliance monitoring and enforcement action. And the point that we make in the submission is that that needs to be adequately resourced in order to be able to be done effectively. Um, so what we're asking for in the submission is that you put adequate resourcing into what's required in order to make sure that compliance monitoring is done effectively and that enforcement action is able to be taken when necessary.
So thank you. I just, I'm interested in point nine, you talk about Enviro Schools Programme and, um, strongly support that proposed, the proposed, um, rates for the, uh, Enviro Schools Programme. But also you say that the council's looking at increasing certainty of funding for local delivery. And I just wonder, how do you feel like the split should be or how, um, should there be a more local, specific rating for Enviro Schools in our, in our council region and in the different areas? Or should it be more broad across the region? How do you?
Yeah, we hadn't really considered that from a rating point of view. We'd certainly consider it from a funding support point of view. And this is a matter that, um, I expect that we will be considering as a result of long-term plan submissions, um, to our own long-term plan. And certainly something that, um, should be a shared responsibility. Um, I mean, my own personal view is that the city council should be contributing and Environment Canterbury should be contributing. Um, we didn't get into how that should be rated for, but certainly it should be adequately funded. And I would certainly see this as a shared responsibility across both of our councils, that you're able to be delivered effectively.
I actually have two, but the first one's a yes or no. Based on your comments around the, uh, public transport space, it's a city council's position that you would, uh, support an increased public transport rate, right? And great services. And the second question is, sorry. Second question's in reference to, uh, paragraphs eleven and twelve. Uh, are you concerned over at city council about our shared ratepayers paying twice or perhaps three times for planning work that's required as, as a result of reform, reforms coming on it?
So on the public transport one, again, um, a little bit like my answer to the previous question. Um, we haven't discussed whether we believe you should be rating differently for public transport, and it would be wrong in this environment for me to offer a, a personal opinion. Um, but certainly you'll see we've made some comments in our written submission about accessibility to public transport, the cost of public transport. We're obviously aware of work that you're doing or planning to do in, in that space around, um, free or gold coin or other, um, payment mechanisms for, for public transport. We certainly would support anything that makes public transport more accessible, more desirable, and that gets more people onto the buses. Um, we didn't get involved in how you should be rating for that. And if you were go to, if you were to go to a free transfer, a free public transport model or reduced cost public transport model, um, obviously those costs need to fall somewhere. Um, but we didn't comment on how you might want to rate for any shortfall that that would provide. And then the second question on, um, planning, um, again, I don't know whether I've really got the required information to answer that question well. Um, you know, I mean, at a high level, um, you would expect that, um, those applying for consents would, uh, would be making payment for those consents, that the charging, um, would be where the workforce and where the requirement is. Um, but beyond that, um, I'm probably not qualified to, to make any particular detail remarks.
That's fine, and we can fill that gap and if we need to between ourselves and yourself. Um, there was one more question. If there's one more question, we'll take one more question. But the doesn't seem to be, so Andrew, another nice walk back for you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. And now I see we've got, um, uh, councillor Mackay and the, and the, gonna be the next submitted. So Angus, if you wouldn't mind coming to the table once Andrew's departed. Thank you. And we're just ready. So you know the rules, Angus, in terms of Louise is in charge at nine minutes. If we get there, she'll value one more minute. We're in your hands.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Councillors, can I please make a claim that I'm here as Angus Mackay, not as councillor today? Uh, the Ashburn District Council has its own submission, which you will presumably read in good time. But I'm here on a totally, uh, slightly shorter theme. I made a special effort to come here today, councillors, to express my view that the Canterbury Regional Council, E C A N, is not, in my opinion, listening to the whole of the region as well as it could or has done in the past. Personally, I have always made the extra effort to understand Christchurch City and watched the city progress. I understand fully, I believe, the change that the people of Canterbury made for this council at the last election. I have been known on a number of occasions, in public and privately, to congratulate chairs, mayors, councillors of the city and of the region on what good decisions and achievements they have made for the total region and especially Christchurch City. Councillors, your great rise is absolutely beyond belief. Page ten. In your document, you say implementing the government's essential freshwater package, which prescribes the new limits for farming activities and for water quality. Councillors, the government has set the limits and the quality standards. All you have to do is put these into a regional context. I know from experience that the hard grunt work of planning is actually developing the water quality and the standards and the limits that you wish to get to. Government has done that for you in a national policy statement. I remember once I invited E C A N to come to Hackery, where some houses were falling over the cliff, and the residents of Hackery Township wanted to put in some protection. And your staff quite rightly said that the national policy, uh, national policy statement on coastal was it and nothing else could be done. They very carefully explained the standards and the qualities, the, the water qualities and the qualities of the national policy statement on coastal, and the people understood. Count, the Ashburn District Council demolished those houses and moved them away and left the coast exactly how it was. There is a saying, councillors, to achieve is the art of the possible. And if you achieve with the people on site with you, I guarantee you will have many more wins. To sting them, make them pay more than what they believe is a fair share, will only lose their trust and cause them to scoff at working with E C A N in the future. The voluntary planting of waterways at their own cost, developing mudfish habitat and native planting, I serious question if it will happen to the same extent because they will believe they've already paid through their high rate. I also ask you to please support the Heinz Plains targeted rate. This rate shows that the people want to achieve a local solution for local people for a finite project. Please take the people with you. I believe you will achieve quicker solutions that are much more sustainable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, councillors, for your time.
Thank you, Angus. Um, have we got questions? Uh, councillor Hans.
In your submission, Angus, you mentioned both the U A D C and, but, but the U A D C, it steals it from each other. Um, U A D C and loan funding, just wondering if you could expand on your comments there around use of those tools and what, where would be appropriate?
As in my written submission. Yes, um, I've always been a fan of the River Rating Districts that we run and the way that the money is, um, sorted through, where the beneficiary pays. Um, I'm actually, uh, believe that uniform annual general charges are a great way to raise money, especially for people things. And this is where I struggle a wee bit because, um, I've got the impression that the people of, uh, Canterbury on a whole, at the last election, voted for a more picturesque Canterbury um, with planted streams and good habitats. So to me, that's a people's thing. So maybe you should, in my opinion, have a uniform annual general charge for that sort of work right up to the absolute limit. So you spread the people of Christchurch that want that. Yes, they can take their, they can pay for it and take their drive out into the countryside and see it happen. But at the moment, the people who are actually doing these chores are the ones that you are going to rate almost out of existence.
Thank you. Any other questions around the table? Doesn't seem so, Angus. So thank you for coming in and all the way from Ashburn for that. We look forward to, uh, considering what you were saying in our deliberations. Now, we've got two more submissions today, Melanie, uh, if you'd like to come to the table. And then once Melanie's finished, dot, I think you're here. Dot Lovell Smith is then, and so it will be done. So Melanie, you go ahead when you're ready.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, councillors. Um, Kyo, Tato, Ilhuma, Nor, Melanie Brooks, Tukunor, Korte, Kaif, Akahide, M H V Y. Um, I've been with, um, M H V Water since, uh, June twenty seventeen, and prior to that I had about seventeen years in, in finance, both here and abroad, focused more on leadership and business and corporate banking. And M H V Water is a farmer-owned cooperative. Um, we own and manage the infrastructure and which delivers water to our farmers and also manage their environmental compliance. So we've got about, well, we do have two hundred and six farmer shareholders. And they, um, we, we manage for them on their behalf about fifty-eight thousand hectares in the Hikio Heinz Plains of Mid Canterbury. Um, in addition to representing our farmer shareholders as a whole, we also own, uh, fifteen different parcels of land, which is about two hundred and fifty-six hectares of land. Um, and we are rated on these properties. A lot of them are small corners of properties or land. Um, but some of them also have ponds on them. So, um, on average, our rates increase across those properties is a hundred and nine percent. And for one of those properties, it's ten thousand dollars is the increase year on year. And so just before I talk specifically about our feedback on that, um, on the long-term plan, I wanted to provide some context of what we do more broadly. And so you'll notice I haven't described us as an irrigation scheme, and that's because we've long evolved away from that definition. Um, maybe six or seven years ago, when we would deliver water to the gate and say, knock yourselves out. Um, but definitely not now. Um, and I think some people discount our knowledge and experience when it comes to the environmental management space because potentially of their own preconceived ideas and or of what we may or may not do. So we're really passionate about making a difference uh, and supporting our farmers on a journey of continuous improvement, um, both with our infrastructure and with our environmental compliance. So in my four years that I've had with M H V, I've seen a meaningful change in the mindset of our farmers, and pleasingly, we're starting to see not only improvements on on-farm practices, but also environmental outcomes. Collaborating a lot with other farmers who aren't in our shareholder base to share knowledge and help improve what's happening across our whole district. We've got comprehensive groundwater monitoring programmes and surface water monitoring programmes, which we transparently share across the community to help inform better decision-making and research opportunities. We're experienced in facilitating and delivering environmental management strategies which focus on education, engagement and, and collaboration. And we've gone through the sub-regional planning process of Plan Change Two, which, um, part of the Land and Water Regional Planning Framework. We had a consent granted prior to that going through, and we've got another one that has just been granted post Plan Change Two and post the, um, N P S F M twenty. So given our experience, um, and given when you think about the five transformational opportunities that you've identified, um, much, what, most of which are well-aligned to our experience, namely around the sort of regeneration of natural environment, facilitating diversification of land use and building community engagement. I think we're in a unique position to provide feedback on our experience of what works and what doesn't work when it comes to affecting change and getting outcomes and improvements on farm. To be really clear, we want to see improved environmental outcomes, especially in water quality, and we have some significant concerns about the long-term plan, namely the cost imposition and how that is disproportionately skewed to the rural sector, and more importantly, that there are insignificant details for us to be able to determine if what you've proposed will actually genuinely drive any improvements in environmental outcomes. Um, I have my doubts. Um, I don't believe that the plan sufficiently lays out how that increase is going to be spent, and that's with the exception of the Manage Act for Recharge targeted rate, because that was quite a comprehensive document. Um, so just to go into some more specifics around the statutory requirements. The plan purports to include all statutory requirements, um, and that was to quote, because you know what needs to be done and what's required by legislation and you want to go beyond that. But yet, when I've spoken to E C A N recently, um, if the gap analysis between Plan Change Two, your sub, one of the sub-regional plans, and the N P S F M twenty has been undertaken, you've said that hasn't yet been completed. So how can you know the extent of the statutory requirements are required and budget for those if you haven't done that work? And I also don't understand why you would be reworking plans that for all intents and purposes may meet the N P S F M twenty frameworks. So I, I'm from the So I'm from the Hikio Heinz Plains, going to talk about PC two. And our sub-regional plan, that was gazetted in 2018. That was about reducing nutrient leaching from land use activities, improving the management of water abstraction in irrigated area and using MAR to target legacy issues of quality and quantity of groundwater. So in the plan, you're proposing to spend $24 million in consenting and planning to stop further decline in activity and improve environment for further generations. The existing framework ensures a stop to further degradation. It is designed to ensure improved water bodies in the short term. It was put in place in 2018 and we've seen an improving trend in groundwater quality since 2019. Around the water and land portfolio in LOES nine, there's around enable resources to implement GMP. And the way that I read this performance measure, you're proposing to hold aggregated consent entities. So that's the like of catchment groups, collectives or irrigation schemes to a minimum of GMP. And I think that's absolutely reasonable. In that same graph, in that same table, you're suggesting that farmers outside a scheme or a collective would be held to a lesser standard. You're proposing that they provide them advice, they provide them advice and guidance to implement GMP. I believe this is completely unacceptable. And it flows on to another concern. And I notice in the plan, I notice in the plan, you've got funds for consent compliance. And given the workload on the consent compliance team, consent compliance team, I think that's a real positive. But I think there's a fundamental issue here because their KPIs are based on monitoring consents and they're driven on their chargeable hours. Given there are farmers that are still in the ECAN Takewa who do not have consents, are you also looking to increase the funding to ensure that those farmers will get consents so that they can be monitored? Consents had to be in place in our district by 2017. And I think it's really unacceptable that there's inconsistencies here. One of the other questions you ask are what are the challenges we face? Look, we all know there are significant regulatory headwinds facing all regional councils. ECAN has invested significantly in the sub-regional planning framework to give effect to NPSFM seventeen. And we strongly recommend that further work is done to ascertain the ability to push back the 2024 notification requirements where sub-regional plans are already in place and already on a pathway to achieving the new NPSFM twenty targets. Prioritizing rework that will not, that will be expensive and add very little value in terms of improving environmental outcomes is strongly opposed by MHB Water. As such, we don't support either option in terms of the long-term plan. The council has set a 5.7% average increase over 10 years as the maximum. What you've proposed is not affordable or reasonable. We believe that both the income and expenses need to be reviewed as part of this process. It feels as though the focus has just been on increasing income and not on cost controls. The possible grants available are a positive and can provide good outcomes for the community. And we've also have some concerns that perhaps the private sector could also already be meeting areas where ECAN is looking to also provide facilities or services. And cost control is critical. Where you've got great programs, I'm really staggered to hear that, for example, immediate steps has a dollar spent. Every dollar that goes out the door, there's a dollar cost with it. I think that really needs to be addressed. You've got a large component of education in the budget for schools, for rural and urban. And with respect, our farmers don't need education from ECAN. They need ECAN ensuring that everyone is on the bus. But that's where I believe ECAN can be facilitating and encouraging catchment groups because we will get a much better bang for our buck and farmers will far better learn from their peers. We support the targeted regional rate for Manage Act for Recharge. And we support other regions who are looking to put into place different projects, having the ability to utilise the rating structure for that purpose. As far as the uniform annual general charges go, we do have concerns the rural community is disproportionately carrying the burden of the rate increases. And this is exacerbated when it comes to the split of the UAG from the general rates. And the feedback I've had from our farmers is that they're largely prepared to meet the costs of MAR. But I fear that some may see farmers as a never-ending source of revenue. And when our rural rates are proposed to increase by over 100%, you have to ask if that is reasonable. Because whilst the total rate contribution is going up by 24.5%, it does demonstrate the disproportionate spread of that across rural and urban. I also have some concerns around borrowing to cover excessive spending on operational activities. And I think that's highly concerning and I wouldn't, we wouldn't support that. Support borrowing for capital expenditure on fixed assets. But yeah, I have an issue in the other piece. In summary, your operating principles include listening to the people to serve communities. And that's all of your communities. You need to take into account cultural, social, economic and environmental wellbeing. You also state that change will be both managed and manageable and that you will enable innovation. I find these statements, your guiding principles, especially the ones about ensuring change is well-managed, are largely at odds with the long-term plan. Change management is a process that ensures understanding about how the change will actually help. And it's really important that when you're making changes, people on the ground can connect between, this is the change that's being made, I understand how that change will drive improvements. And I think there's a fundamental gap in the long-term plan in that regard. When I think about the amount of money that's being spent and I think about how we could spend that money in our catchment to make change, I think about like simmered trials, the way we can use spiky winter grazing practices, land use change evolution. And I think you could really make some awesome changes. But I don't think that will be the way that we're proposing to do that on regulatory rechange when we already have robust processes in place. I just, I just can't see how it will work. I'm worried about engagement. We had a four-year engagement process as part of Plan Change Two, four years. 2014, it was notified, 2018, it was gazetted. And we're looking at rolling something out by 2024. I worry that we will lose people along the way. I don't think the spending will make a meaningful difference on improving water quality. I don't think you'll be getting the best return for your rate payer's dollars, our money. And I think that money could be used to far greater effect outside of the regional council. Thank you.
Before we go to questions, we've got councillor Marshall first, but I acknowledge your leadership in this space, Melanie, it's helping. I know you're very passionate about this and you take it to heart. And so thank you for that. And thank you for highlighting the things that you think we should be looking at. Councillor Marshall.
Good. And thank you so much for coming up to present today. My question is on what you've spoken about today, that we shouldn't be revisiting plans that are already on their way to achieving bottom lines. So is it the belief of yourself or your organisation that the current plan rules for the Heinz area will achieve the targets set in the new national policy statement? If you have a question about that again, please. Yeah, sorry, one, one of the.
That makes sense. And so as far as the targets under the NPSFM twenty, the targets need to be achieved over a generation. And a generation and discussions that I've had with Minister Parker have been defined as between 25 to 40 years. And so when we think about Plan Change Two, Plan Change Two, the objectives that we have in there are to be achieved by 2035. So we've got a 15, 14 now, I keep forgetting we're in 2020 or one. That's a, that's a window, a 14-year window for us to achieve that. So if you think about the journey that we need to achieve to the 2.4, which is the national bottom line, in the NPS, it explicitly states that the targets set by the regional council must be ambitious, but reasonable and not impossible. There's a specific wording in the clause. And so we have a plan, a sub-regional plan that went through a four-year planning process to achieve targets based on the information we had at the time that were ambitious but reasonable. And, and I don't understand why we would rework that when that takes us on the trajectory towards that 2.4.
Thank you. Any other questions? councillor Hands, then councillor Edge.
Thank you, Mal, for your contribution submission. Just given your finance background and our debates around borrowing, just wondering what your view is in terms of borrowing or doing a plan change. Would you consider that to be capex rockets?
So it's a challenging one, isn't it? Because whenever we look at resource consensus, we put that as a fixed asset. And so when you've got it as a fixed asset, you would think about the life of that asset and then amortise it over the life of that asset. And so if you were going to do a plan change and that plan change was over a longer period, you could argue that that could easily be financed. I suppose then that feeds into, if you've done a plan change that you did, that was gazetted in 2018 and then you're doing it again, does that mean that you're going to then take that and you're going to depreciate the rest of the life of that asset that you have? Because you would have presumably done that for the term of that PC two, that you will have put it on your balance sheet. Are you then going to go, well, actually, now that we're redoing this work, all of that needs to be depreciated now? Because we don't have, there's no value in that anymore and we start again. I don't know the answer to that. That's probably an accounting question.
I thank you for that. So we've got councillor Edge.
Thank you. I was just wanting some clarification. You commented that you didn't consider the education was needed for farmers. But you also suggested that change management, you needed to connect with people on the ground. Do you think the two, if you could clarify, how those two work here?
Yeah, so it's, it's difficult in the long-term plan to get it, to get a feel for exactly what the split of everything is. There's not a whole lot of detail in there to know. So when it comes to education and for farmers to learn what's right, I believe that comes from peer to peer in terms of what they can do on farm. And so if the education that you're talking about is can ECAN be the one standing up there and saying to their farmers, this is how you're going to do winter grazing and this is how you, you should be managing the rotation of your crops. I think that's a no. I don't believe that's an ECAN role. And similarly, I mean, I, I lead an irrigation scheme and I try not to make that my role because the farmers don't really appreciate me getting up there and standing there and telling them how to farm. But if you're talking about how to engage farmers, or anyone for that matter, in a change management process, I'm not necessarily sure I'd qualify that as education. I would maybe call that collaboration or engagement. So perhaps there's a change, like the way we're defining those terms is slightly different.
Well, thank you. And we've had a range of submissions today. And we, I just wondered what you think of this principle. We had a submission from a teacher of economics. And he was actually encouraging us to, to actually follow the polluter pays principle. So I just wondered where that fits and how you see what ECAN should be doing.
So a really interesting question. And, and I, I think it's one that, that would warrant further discussion. I think the challenge, if you are going down that line, is to be able to define what pollution is. And so at the moment, the tools that we, we would have, if you were talking about nitrate as a polluter, and the tools that we have wouldn't give us the ability to do that. And so if you were talking about other pollutants, the question would be how you would do that with the likes of the heavy needle runoffs in town. I don't know how you would, you would account for it. But yeah, possibly it's part for a wider discussion.
Thanks, thanks for answering that. It wasn't in your submission. So thanks for answering it anyway. That was good.
That is a personal view and not the view of MHB Water.
Melanie, thank you again for coming up here and doing this. It's pretty comprehensive what you've told us and you've put a lot of thought into it. And you, you actually do lead a lot of farmers. So we should be taking note of what you say and we will take that into consideration when we do our deliberations. So thank you. Now, the next submitter is Dot. Dot, I see you down the back there. So we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Okay. I'm a great contributor to the last submitter who had all that scientific information. I've come really from the background of somebody who was, you know, who's been living in Canterbury most of their life. And have been frankly, well, I left Christchurch for 10 years or probably 20 years altogether to work in the North Island. Came back in 2010 and was absolutely horrified to visit Lake Ellesne and Te Waihura and see the braided rivers and see how much that changed from my childhood 70 years ago when they were pristine, beautiful environments that we paddled in, that we swam in, that we caught cockabooies in. And just, you know, the whole change has been so distressing, I guess, that I've spent quite a bit of time trying to find out about the ins and outs of the water quality. And also in the last 20 years, just the effects of, of what the dairy industry is having on climate change, not only here but around the world. And so my submission is a very personal thing and I've just gone through it for a section by section. I was impressed by how much work had been put into it. I found the actual booklets quite hard to follow. And it took me quite a long time to find the detail because the online submission thing was very cursory and brief. So I'd like to make that as a criticism of the process. But on that, once I found the detail, I enjoyed going through it and finding out things. So yes, so most of my submission is just pointing at issues which I think are important, like water quality, the and the adverse effects that it's having on climate change, that the farming practices are having on climate change. So that since I put in my submission, I've been thinking more. And one of the things I think has come up is just the sort of, the fact that more and more people are talking about the divide between rural and urban. And it seems to me that it's getting harder and harder for the two sides to talk about things to each other. And I was quite intrigued and also upset by, I got a letter from, from Nicola Greg, the National Party MP. And I'm not in her electorate, but I'm quite close to the boundary in Haie. She sent me a letter explaining what she's doing as a new national MP. And she, you know, I thought, oh, she's the woman spokesperson, that's good. She's cultural advisor, that's good, you know, into culture and arts and that's good. And then I got, and then I got to the bit where she said, I will work with local authorities and community groups on preservation and conservation to ensure that our natural environment or to ensure the preservation and conservation of our natural environment and mitigate the impacts of climate change. So I thought, oh, that sounds good too. But then I got to the sentence that says, I will fight for farmers impacted by punitive regulations and restrictions. And the word punitive just really got to me because it seemed to me that she was already dismissing things that ECAN might be trying to do to improve water quality and farming practices. And so I've been thinking a bit about, you know, how we can try and get, get through that. Get the barriers broken down between rural and urban thinking. Because, you know, a lot of urban people are disturbed by the water quality in the rural areas. And of course, it's affecting, it's going to affect and already is affecting our drinking water if things get worse. So I'm pleased to see that, you know, regulation and, and standards are coming in. I'm a bit disappointed that they're still far too high in nitrate levels as far as I'm concerned. I think the permissible amount of nitrates in water should be much lower. It's much higher than in other countries. And I think we're going to have to bear the health impacts of that in the future. With my other issues. Yeah, I think, I think the education budget is actually really important. And I actually see that the support of farmers to help them change farming practices is, is part of that budget, unlike the. is, is part of that budget, unlike the previous figure. I also think that we, we all, and E C A N especially, which it did in its plan, needs to present the vision of what Canterbury could look like in the future to everybody, which includes, you know, from preschoolers up through grannies like me. And so that people become aware that, that this is actually something that can happen, rather than something that, that's a pie in the sky and will never happen. I was in Auckland recently and I mentioned something about Canterbury having problems with water and the Aucklander just dismissed it. He said, oh, Canterbury's water's stuffed, you know, and he seemed to just think, well, there's nothing we can do about it, especially up here, we don't have to worry about it. Whereas to me, you know, it's something that is vitally important and needs to be fixed as soon as possible. I don't know if I've got much more to sort of push. There's a few things I missed out. One is that I didn't really look at the sea coast stuff at all. And I'm not quite sure how far your jurisdiction goes out to sea, but I would really, really, really like to see much bigger marine reserves. Because, you know, dolphins and things are becoming terribly affected.
So I think you just have to watch the space, Dot, on that stuff. We're about to redo our coastal plan. We go twelve miles out to sea, some from main ice springs. And, you know, you've done yourself a disservice. You've done really well here. I mean, you've got a very good submission and you've asked us a lot of questions. So thank you and congratulations on that. Have we got questions?
Yeah, I really enjoyed reading your submission, Dot. There's a lot in it. I've just got a couple of questions. And my first question is, you've said here that we need a provision of public input when processing resource consents that have consequences for public health and environment. So do you think something like having a review of, of the policy that we have around public notification on our consents would be, I mean, how, what, you know, would, would that be acceptable to you? What type of thing do you, do you think we should do there?
I put that in as a reaction really to the previous situation, you know, when the commissioners were here. And, and it appeared to me, that was when I first came back to Canterbury and I was just horrified by that lack of democracy and consultation and sort of publicity about what was going on. And so, yeah, I think there should be some sort of public consultation available, perhaps even, even just notifying in the newspapers and things that it's going on, the extent of the, the extent of the consent, that the consent will cover, how long it will go on and, and what sort of standards the water is going to be expected to be at by the, you know, in a certain time, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I really don't think we should be giving new consents to new water use. I think Canterbury's water is totally over subscribed already. I don't think the aquifers are coping. And I don't think, I don't think that the rivers should be used to recharge. I mean, there's a natural recharge going on underground between the aquifers and the rivers. And I think to sort of try and change that anymore from what's happening now would be, would be really detrimental to the rivers and to groundwater.
Thank you, councillor Ian McKenty.
Does your answer to Liza's question cover? Does your answer? Does your answer, does your answer to Liza's question about no more consents applied to urban development as well as rural development?
I mean, it's been really mean. I'd like to see, I'd really like to see urban, urban development more concentrated. And so that there's, so that planning, I would really like to see, you know, a city planning department again, like they used to have in the old days, so that you don't get this piece of milk planning by developer, which is gobbling up places like Marshlands and the horse well, beautiful horse well land that used to grow spuds and things like that. And the orchards have all gone, you know, from around Christchurch. So that yeah, I would, I would, I suppose, like to see, yeah, that there's some sort of public eye going on these developments that just pop up suddenly and get rid of wetland here and, you know, market garden over there. There's a lot of development that could happen within the city where, you know, houses could go up, they could, we could have residences above light industry, we could have residences against above shops and things like that to keep the footprint of Christchurch from spreading out.
Thank you. Other question? Well, thank you, Dot. As I said before, I thought you'd done really well with that submission. You started off by saying that, kind of hard to read, but you've come up with some good stuff. So thank you for that. We'll take that under as we do our deliberations, we'll consider what you've said to us today. So thank you for coming along. That brings us to the end of proceedings today. But before we move, I'll ask councillor Apunno, are you going to do karakia to finish? Thank you.